Howdy.
Hi, how are you?
Okay. We certainly are getting a lot of documents.
I know. We are. Content's good rather than no content, but yes, I agree.
Well, I downloaded it all. I unpacked it all. It's all sitting in my current cases folder. So if we need any of it, we've got it.
Thank you. You're the best.
Oh, somebody misspelled Levitsky. When it isn't Levitsky, it's probably you. There's an extra S in there on the agenda. Yep.
It might have been me.
I think so.
I will double check that later. Thank you.
I don't know that it matters a whole lot, at least to your processes, but.
I know, and it's always, we all kind of look for the public hearing and the legal notice, so it's good by then, you know?
Yep. Hi, John.
Hello.
John.
Unmuted. Hello.
I shot you an email about our phone call earlier.
What was the, I didn't see it.
Um, to look into it, but you can read my email more after that.
Angela Cross, you're back among the living, eh? Haven't seen her in a while. Still can't see her.
You did too.
I'm gonna change my name, but I don't know.
Oh, hey, Peter.
Oh, we can, we can talk you through that, Judy and I.
Yeah.
I can change it.
Okay.
I got you. Look at that.
Hi.
Yay.
All right, now I gotta get.
Now I want to see you.
Now I lost, now I lost video. All right. Uh. Oh, Oscar.
The little stop video button on the lower left.
I was gonna say Judy knows what to do. Let's see.
The little stop video button on the lower left. You need to click on it so the everything goes away.
I don't have anything. Oh, wait, there we go. Okay. Well.
You on a phone or on a, or on a computer?
Okay.
You got it. Good for you.
Okay.
Yay.
Laura Ritchie, I sent you the map this afternoon. I think it's what we need.
Yeah, okay, I'll take a look when I get a chance. Thanks. Appreciate, very much appreciate.
I learned one more, I learned one more trick with a little help from Bert Samuelson.
Okay. So you want, you want to give me a hint of what the trick was, or should I just look at the map?
Uh, there's a way of defining areas of the map by the size of the acreage or some other.
Oh.
There is something that allowed me to put little tiny numbers in the little tiny web, in the little tiny plot. If there wasn't an acre, but if you zoom in all the way, you can read them.
Yep, okay, perfect. Thank, thank you. Thank you. As long as I'm off mute here. So Peter, I'm just here because I've worked on telecommunications. I'm just here to listen. If you have any questions for me as the town board member, um, I know that Andrew's here to talk about it, but I'm just here to listen in case there's anything on telecommunications that you wanted to ask about.
Okay.
Perfect.
So we got Stuart, we got Judy, we got John.
We got James. We've got a quorum.
Okay.
The only person's not yet is Connor, and well, we shall see.
Brian's down there at the bottom under the cat.
We like his cat.
Right, well, it is 6:30. We do have a quorum, so I'd like to call to order the regular planning board meeting for Woodstock Planning Board for October 20th, 2022, held via Zoom. And are there any updates to the agenda, Melissa?
There are not.
Okay, so minutes, we have the minutes of September 29th. If everybody's okay with them, then we'd like to approve them.
Done, moved.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, under communications and announcements, we have an email from Walker and Wasilic regarding the Barron Leeds and Roots Lot Line Revision. We have an email regarding the Woodstock Housing Committee Newsletter. And we have an email from D1 regarding the planning board, I mean, the town board meeting for, uh, Tuesday, and I'm actually gonna, if I can get my cursor here to work, I'm going to, um, read that for you so that everybody has it. It's tomorrow night, the Ulster County Planning Department is making a presentation at the Woodstock Town Board Meeting on its newly hatched Housing Smart Communities Program and how it relates to Woodstock.
Oh, Peter. Hang on.
Days ago.
That was on Tuesday. That was, that happened this week.
That happened on Tuesday. Okay.
Sorry.
Okay.
I was there.
I watched it after.
All right.
Sorry to throw you off, but just.
No problem. Let me get back to where it was.
They were very complimentary of our leadership in this area.
And we will see more, definitely, with Deb in her new. Yeah.
Okay, now I lost, hold on. Hey, 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 all right.
You're good. There was only a few emails. I think you covered them.
I got it. And I got it. Okay, okay, so, uh, so that was it for communications and announcements. So under new business, under scheduled business, we have two public hearings. And then we have two sketch plan reviews. So the first public hearing is, uh, well, I'm actually two minutes early, so I better wait. And then at the end, we have a couple of things to go over. So. Um. Let me, uh. Wait a second. I totally lost. Oh, God. Well, I've lost my Zoom meeting. I don't know where to find it.
We see you. Is it in the bottom? There's a camera at the bottom of the screen. Try to move your mouse.
All right, hold on. Lost here. Well.
Hey, Peter, what do you see on your screen now?
I, I, mine's blank. I mean, it's just completely white and it's just going in circles. I don't know what's going on.
What's funny is we see you.
I can't get out of it.
We see everything.
If you want to, you can leave and come back in.
That's what I was gonna suggest.
Oh, Laurel might be to the rescue.
It's just going in circles. I can't get out of it.
Okay, so.
Maybe sign out and sign back in?
I guess. I don't even, I can't get any, access my screen.
It's funny, we see him. He just doesn't see us.
It was, okay, I'm good too, but it was the meeting.
Okay, okay.
Ah, there we go.
Saved by Laurel. Thank you, Laurel, my team.
Okay.
Bravo.
Okay, so for our first public hearing, we have Jack Barron and Linda Leeds and Joseph T. Fallon and Marina Roots.
Nope, you're ahead of us. We're Jesse Cohen Dupont first.
What's that?
You're ahead of us. The first one is Jesse Cohen.
Oh, I'm sorry. I've done, flipped on down. Okay, here we go. Jesse Cohen Dupont and Lindsay Del Paz, and it's a public hearing for a special use permit application to operate a health services office in the R3 zoning district located at 28 Country Club Lane in Woodstock. So if the applicant would like to, uh, tell the board, uh, what it is they propose, and I will make a motion to open the public hearing.
Okay, hello, everybody. Um, yeah, so my name is Jesse.
Hold on one sec, I gotta open the public hearing. Uh, all in favor of opening a public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, good, good. Okay, Jess.
Okay, thank you. Um, so yes, my name is Jesse Cohen Dupont. Um, I am a physical therapist, and I am planning or hoping to open up a private practice in the back extension of my home. Um, it would be around a 600 square foot space with a separate entrance on one floor. Um, it would be just myself practicing, no staff, no employees, um, with the hopes of seeing about four to five people a day. Um, I have a driveway that's about 112 feet, 20 feet long, to hopefully just accommodate one car at a time, but it could accommodate two if needed. Um, but yes, my hope is to open that space so I can practice physical therapy in our community.
Okay.
I've got that map up if you, if you need it.
Uh, sure, Judy, if you want to put it up, and, uh, so, uh, any members of the, uh, public have questions for the applicant?
I see. Hope maybe not.
Okay, Melissa, are there, is there anybody from the public here for this case?
I did not ha, I had, uh, two neighbors ask for the file, but no concerns were given. Um, just make sure anyone here want to speak, please raise your hand or let me know now. Doesn't look like it.
Okay, well, hearing none, then, uh, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the application pending draft resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Judy, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Jess, so, uh, Melissa will, uh, get in touch with you and take care of the paperwork now.
Jesse, it's all paperwork now, and yes, I'll be in touch with you as Peter said. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Good luck.
All right, Jess. And let's see, timing wise, 6:40.
You're close, and now it's Jack Barron and Linda Leeds.
Uh, well, I'm not Linda Leeds. As you can see, Linda Leeds is right here. Uh, we bought a property.
I thought we haven't opened the public hearing yet.
Yeah, hold on one second. I just gotta, I'm waiting a minute. Just waiting one minute so that, uh.
We're on time.
I'm on time.
I'm muting you.
Yeah.
That's the existing lots right there.
Right.
Perfect.
Except that the lines are not in the right place because they showed to go through a house, which obviously is not true. Two houses.
My time went disappeared. Okay, so, uh, the 6:40 public hearing is Jack Barron and Linda Leeds and Joseph T. Fallon and Mary Ann Brewes. And it's a public hearing for a subdivision application for a lot line revision to revise lot lines of three parcels to create two new lots totaling 3.3 and 1.3 acres located in the R5 zoning district at 392 and 420 O'Hale Mountain Road in Woodstock. And we have Bill State and Paturis Conrad, PC, as presenters. Uh, so I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, uh, who is going to, uh, present the case? Could you please tell the public what it is you would like to do?
Hi, my name's Bill State. I'm from Paturis Conrad. Um, I'm representing Jack Barron, Linda Leeds, Joseph Fallon, and Mary Ann Brewes in this subdivision that they're looking to do. Uh, they had purchased the property that is in between them, and they would like to split it and join it to their properties. Um, a third, basically a third would go to, um, Joseph Fallon and Mary Ann, I'm sorry, Mary Ann Brewes. And then two thirds would be going over to Jack Barron and Linda Leeds. Uh, there's currently no building plans for the property. It's just for their enjoyment and to gain more property to each property they already own.
Okay, well, it sounds straightforward enough. Uh, are there any members of the public that have questions for the applicant? Melissa, did you get any letters or emails regarding from the public?
Just received a positive one from a neighbor that was very, um, in tune and appreciated what you guys are doing. That's it.
Okay, um.
All right.
So, uh, I did the site visit myself. Everything is in order. Usually what, make sure that the property line isn't splitting septic systems or wells or anything. It is not. It's all straightforward. So hearing no other, uh, members of the public having questions, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, so, uh, folks, again, Melissa will get in touch with you or, uh, so you can arrange, uh, the finishing of the paperwork.
You just gotta approve the application, Peter.
Oh, and here we go. I'd like to take a most, approve, a motion to approve the application pending draft resolution.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, now.
Guys, I'll be in touch early next week.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Bill.
Bye.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, very good. Those were good enough.
That makes two non-conforming lots slightly less non-conforming.
Perfect, exactly, exactly, and, and no more, uh, McMansions. Okay, so under sketch plan review, we have Boulder Rock LLC, which is a sketch plan review of a site plan review application to construct a lean-to to an existing barn in the NC zoning district located at 3203 Route 212 in Bearsville. And Frederick Vercontrand is the applicant, and I guess if Judy wants to put it up, if you all know, it's on the corner of the Wittenberg Road and, and, uh, where we, uh, just after from where we were looking at this, at the apartments that we were gonna do.
So is it this barn here?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Hi, Frederick.
Hi.
So it's quite far away from the, from the stream buffer, which is the only thing I was looking for, and of course, our property lines are never accurate on this.
Correct.
All right, now, I guess it's before us, Melissa, because it's in the, uh, in the NC zoning district.
Yeah, I think, yeah. I went to, I went to Bush and asked actually when it was, and, you know, he's, he's doing a thorough job with looking at the law for every application that they get and decide, you know, this kind of prompted a site plan review. Yeah, you got it.
All right, uh, so, would the applicant like to tell the planning board, uh, what they plan to do?
Fred, that's you. Tell the board what, what's going on.
For me over there?
Yeah, you. Tell us what you're doing.
Oh, it's, it's, it's just a, um, a lean-to, you know, like to store things so they don't get wet. That's it.
Any members of the board have questions for the applicant?
Does it intrude into any of the setbacks?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else on the board have questions?
Peter?
Yes, Stuart.
This is Stuart. I'm wondering, this seems relatively, uh, um, minor. Why, why is this, uh, requiring, uh, our approval?
I don't know about approval, but we can certainly waive further review. If, I mean, it's certainly minor. Like I said, I'm not even sure why it's before us. I guess because it's in the NC, but, uh, if everybody on the board feels good about it, we could just waive further review.
So moved.
Well, does anyone have any issues about it? I don't really see any, but I, just me, you know?
When you lean to, it just leans against an existing structure.
You create like a tiny little space.
Right, it's not adding any more traffic or, let me ask one question. Are you putting any lighting on this?
Uh, no.
Okay. If you do, please make it dark sky compliant. Um, if nobody else has any questions, I'll accept the board's agreement to waive further review if you all feel good about it.
Makes sense to me.
Yep.
All right, let's, let's do that.
Frederick, what that means is that now it's just paperwork, and you and I will be in touch. You do not have to meet with the planning board again.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much.
They will, uh, approve a resolution that I prepare at the next meeting, so it'll be a couple of weeks, but you're, you're good as far as the board's in agreeance with what you're doing, and we'll continue and move forward, and then it'll just be plans and paperwork.
Very good. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Frederick.
Okay, good evening.
Take care.
Bye-bye.
Very good. Okay, so the next one we have is, uh, Levinsky and Collins, and it's a sketch plan review of a special use permit application to construct a single-family residence within the scenic overlay in R8 zoning district located on California Quarry Road in Woodstock. And the representative, Daniel Cantelmo, and, um, sir, if you're here, would you please tell the board what, uh, you propose to do?
Yes, hi, I'm Dan Cantelmo, and I'm the architect for the project, and I also have my son, Daniel, who's, um, on as well, who would like to be able to share his screen if that's okay.
Absolutely.
Also, the clients, um, that's distracting, um, Seva Levitsky and Rebecca Collins. Um, what we're proposing is to build a new home on, um, four plus acres. And, um, we have a lot of different plans that we can show you for what that is. It is a steep slope. And there's a sort of an existing driveway cut in. Uh, that's the way that it had looked when they purchased it, and there seems to be kind of an obvious house location. Um, so if you don't mind, we'd like to just go right to those plans and show you, um.
Absolutely, you have, you have that access.
Okay.
Dan Junior, you can just do it. We don't, I don't.
Um. The lot as it exists is, uh, pretty much completely covered with trees. If you look to the left, it, it's, you know, it's, uh, Lot E, and it's all green. Um, obviously, uh, well, there are no trees where that cutout is for the driveway. Um, we will need to obviously take down some trees where the house will go, and also just around the house in order to regrade. Um, we've been very careful to not disturb the site very much at all, and so we've chosen to step the house with the hill to minimize the depth of uh, excavation. And in some cases, we're even putting the, um, the lower level where it protrudes out onto pier footings again so that it minimizes the excavation.
Yeah, I could see it on my map. It looks like it's bare exactly where you're showing it.
Yeah, um, now, one thing we did do in our map is we just made an assumption about connecting the house to the septic. Um, there was a septic laid out for the previous owner, which was located at the bottom where it flattens out. Um, so we were just showing a line coming straight down. However, uh, the, the clients did meet with an engineer about the septic, and they were choosing to kind of take a diagonal route to the septic area because it's too steep to really just come straight down the hill for like an excavator. So we will need to create a, a path to get the excavator down to create the septic and then back out. Um. Let's just go to, uh, the next slide, Daniel.
Wow. Um. What's the degree of slope, do you know?
The, it.
Can everybody hear me okay?
It varies, but, um, it varies between about 23 and 45 degrees.
Whoa. That's really steep.
No, it, it is. It's, I mean, if you look at the east elevation just by itself, you can see, um, the angle, so the right side of the east elevation is where the driveway would come in and the entrance, and then you kind of, you know, progress down the, the slope and the house at the same time within the floor plan. Um, so that's, that's the bad news and the good news kind of at the same time, because, um, one thing that we wanted to point out is that if you look at the the drawing to the upper right says down the hill, um, the structures behind get hidden by the structures in front, uh, because you're always looking uphill at this. Well, you're either at the road, which is way above, or you're down at California Quarry Road, uh, you wouldn't see it anyway because the tree, there's just too many trees, whether there's leaves or not, you just won't see this house, but if you're on the site and looking up, um, the, the main structure that we see in that drawing begins to hide the one in the back. We also want to show you some renderings that we have that further, um, describe that. Uh, I don't know that floor plans are really as helpful. This is a, a rendering of it. Um, with trees as realistically placed as possible, um, it's, it's just very wooded, so. Daniel, can you just give us a different, oh, go ahead, John, you had a question?
I, I did. Where exactly, I, I mean, I live on California Quarry Road, so I was just wondering where this is.
It's at the very top, but on the south side, when you get to the top and it flattens out.
Do they plan on living there in the winter?
Um.
I'm dead serious.
No, I know. It's, it's, uh, it's quite the, the road to climb. Um, they're on, uh, Seven Rebecca, you can answer that question.
Oh, yeah, we've, uh, we've definitely been up there in the winter. First site visit we've done prior to purchasing the property was in February with some snow on the ground. Uh, this is on the upper. Uh, this is on the upper part of the road. John, this is the unpaved portion of the road. If you know the. If you know two fifty-seven, which is the, uh, bridge house, house with a bridge, it's basically across the street from that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Daniel, can you just give us a couple more views?
Is it above or below Rockledge Road?
Above.
Above it, okay.
I can show it to you in, in the, in the scale. I mean, in the larger framework, if you want.
I could have looked. I was just being lazy.
Yeah, so this view right here. Way up to the left is, is the road. So we're, uh, in elevation. I really don't know how many feet down we are, but this is actually, um, this model is placed onto the. Site plan with actual contours, so it, it, it is realistic as far as how far down from the road. This house will be.
How much, uh. Tree removal would have to be. Accomplished in order to have a. View, because the, the, the views from up there are gorgeous.
Um, yeah, I, I really don't believe that in the summer they will have a view. Um, in the winter, they will. Um, but. The, you know, they're really just competing with. How many trees there are and how tall they are when they're this close to the house, not to mention the view is downhill as well. It's not straight out, so. Um, it's probably a half of a year kind of view as far as, you know, seeing mountains in the distance.
The photograph suggests it's almost all deciduous.
It, it is, but it's just so, so thick. Um, you know, there's, there's.
Oh yeah, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you. In the winter, they'll have a view and in the summer they won't.
Yeah, it's, there's hundreds of trees between the house and their bottom property line, and then it just keeps going with more and more. Forest.
Okay, uh, if other members of the board have questions, just quickly, let's go over the fact that we need to make sure that the glazing meets the code for, for the. Walls, that the roof meets the, uh, code as far as color. And lighting meets the code as far as, um, nice guy compliant.
Is that a flat roof?
On this section it is.
I don't recommend it in this climate.
Well, I'm sorry, it's, it's pitched.
Oh, okay, okay. It's pitched within the fr- frame and it's got drains.
Yeah, this is like cheating when you're looking at the model. Um, yeah, we would drain it out. Um, so that we didn't continue to dump onto the lower level or drain it out to the front and then down.
Right.
Um. And so we were very careful to, to follow the code as far as glazing, um, height and colors, and so we've. We have deep overhangs. Uh, not only to protect. The windows from the direct sun, but also to keep. Uh, the sun from reflecting. And again, I just, I don't think that's an issue in this site. But south facing windows are all either covered. Um, with a deep overhang or they have louvers that you see on the southwest corner. Um, and then down below that structure is a screen porch, so that would certainly block. Um, any reflectivity of the glass. Um. So again, we were. We were, you know, looking at that code very carefully. It's our intention to, to meet or exceed what the, uh, requirements are.
Okay, so.
Peter, my concern is the slope, and I would want to look at the proposed new zoning. Because the definition of buildable land definitely includes slope. I think forty-five is the steepest, so it may just fit within it, but it would be good to know what. Our consultants have recommended as a, as a limit for buildability.
Currently, it's, uh, I believe it's fifty percent right now is the maximum slope.
But you're not there.
No, we're not there and, um. We don't intend to change the grade. I- in any of the areas to increase it, which is why the engineer recommended traversing the hill.
Right.
To get to the bottom.
And you're going to bedrock for the foundations?
Um, well. I mean, typically we, we will follow, you know, a code as far as depth to frost, but in this case, because of the slope, we would go deeper. Maybe not to bedrock, because we just don't know where that is. If it was twelve feet deep, we wouldn't go down that far, but we would certainly go deeper. Um, you know, so the house doesn't slide off the hill essentially.
Well, that's my, that's exactly why I'm asking the question.
Yeah. Um, but we do have retaining, you know. Concrete walls in the back of what you would consider the basement to anchor the building as well.
Okay, so let me just mention that the, the biggest concern for the planning board right now is because it's in the scenic overlay. Uh, the building itself speaks for itself as far as the glazing, the roofing and lighting. But it's in the scenic overlay, so, uh, just to give you an example, uh. The standards within the scenic overlay D says the prohibition of development along or on projecting above ridge lines and the discouragement of development. Other visually prominent locations. So this is along the ridge line. So, uh, we need to take that into consideration, and the second thing is that the planning board, uh, has also agreed. That whenever we have development along the top of these mountains. Along the ridges, that we're going to require, uh, drone photography. Showing the condition of the site before construction. So it could be compared afterwards. Uh, for the obvious reason that, right, just mentioned that the trees are there now. It may block your view in the summer, maybe not in the winter, but we're concerned twenty years from now or ten years from now, somebody else buys a house. Or cuts the trees down for the view because.
Right.
We can't have it visible from other locations.
Mm-hmm.
So it has to be screened. So that's one issue. Um, the next thing is for the planning board, we need volunteers to go up there, and I'm telling you. A helicopter would be a better way. But, uh, I, you know, driving up there is quite, quite a challenge, and so for the volunteers. There's something to consider.
And we would certainly like to meet any members that want to meet us there, because, um, one of the things about this location as well is. That since the driveway is, is relatively already determined and the engineer has walked it. And looked at the slope and said it is acceptable as a driveway, that if we locate the house where we're locating it. We are removing the, the least amount of trees possible. If we were to locate the house further down the hill, we have to then create another driveway just to get there. So, uh. This is just removing trees in the, in the location where it is, but the driveway is already clear, so. That was one of the determining factors for putting it where it is.
Okay, well, this is a sketch plan review, and that's what you guys are doing is basically showing us what you'd like. Um, and as I said, the next step, we'll have to get, uh, some planning board members up there, uh, to take a look. And so, uh, at some point, we need to get volunteers for that. And to get together with you to, uh, site visit.
Okay.
Uh, any members of the board have questions for the applicant regarding this project? Do I see hands up? James, yep?
Uh, is the septic just alongside the house or is it across the driveway?
It's all the way at the bottom of the hill, going to the left of this drawing.
Oh, okay.
Because it would be too steep to install a septic. Um, on, on the existing slope until you get to the bottom where it. Call it flattens out, but, um, it still has a little slope to it.
Yeah, I thought, it's, it's not much, it's not much less steep. I mean, I can see the, the contour lines.
Actually, it's, it's pretty significant. Um, the, the grade at the bottom of the site is about fourteen percent. Uh, on the upper side of the site, in the middle of the site, it's between thirty and forty-five.
Hey, Stuart had his hand up, Stuart.
Yeah, it, it, at first, bless, they, they're, they're proposing to build right up at the ridge line, it seems to me, and.
No, they're, they're not, Stuart.
They're not?
The road is above them, uh, if, if I take the sc- the screenshot back. I can show you where it is relative, using the contour lines to show the outline of the property. Just a minute. Okay, so that's the property. And that's, that's a road right here. And it's really kind of tucked into the, to the side of the, of the shoulder. See, there's the shoulder and there's the top. So it's not in a hollow exactly, but it's kind of halfway or a third of the way down toward the stream from the, from the shoulder. The shoulder's right here.
Okay, so I'm just wondering what, you know, is it going to be, uh. To what extent it's going to be an interruption of the, of the viewscape, because you see like forests and trees, then there's going to be a gap where the house is going to be, and then the trees continue again, is that?
Well, I think that would be the case if you built any house, pretty much anywhere in a forest, you have to have a void where the house goes, but it is. It's probab- uh, I'll just take a guess from being there that it's probably, um. Seventy feet below the road above, so any. You know, as far as a view, there's only maybe three houses. That are either there or could potentially be above this house, and they would be right over top of it.
This is the driveway here, and you can see that it's a little bit, a little bit bold, and this is where you're building, right?
Right.
Yeah, that's already, that's already. Uh, closer to being untreated than anything else around.
Right.
And there is that, there is that, I guess it must be an old, an old driveway or an old road or something, because that looked pretty clear.
What is the, uh, color of the roof that's proposed?
Um, you know, because it's a. Flattened roof, it would be close to black, if not black, like a charcoal.
Okay, and there's one portion of the house in the, in the, um. Drawing's not the right word, but. It's not a photograph either. It's a rendering, right?
Right.
So, uh, it looks like there was like a green portion or light green portion of, of the house. Is that?
You can bring it back up if you want to.
Okay.
The rendering?
And, you know, this is really our first take at it, so it's that blue, which we thought really blended in with the sky more than anything. And so we get earth tones and then the blue.
Okay, well, thank you for explaining that. Those are my questions.
Any other members have questions for the applicant?
You're not intending to make it blue, are you?
Um, we really haven't, um. We haven't made decisions on that. It was just trying different colors. Uh, we would certainly. Like to hear the board's opinion about that, because, you know, if there's a color palette that we should be selecting.
There it is.
Okay, then we would.
There's a, Dan, on our website, I can actually email you when the meeting's over. I'll email you. We have a scenic overlay handbook that lays out all of that, so I will tell both of you that.
I think we have it actually.
Okay. All right, if not, hit me up and I'll send it to you, but that actually talks a lot about the color and all that.
Okay.
Any other members have questions for the applicant? Okay, so if not, uh, we'll have to schedule a site visit. And then after the site visit, we'll have a, another, the second sketch plan review. Uh, with more concrete plans and, and input from the board members.
What we're looking for, Dan, and, and guys, um.
You know, I'm in the meeting. Can I kill you back?
With the drone photos. Basically, uh, as it is now, and then kind of what you project it's going to look like after. So, um, that's what we're looking for and what we need to see, just so you're clear with what the expectation is.
And would you be doing a drone photo at the site meeting?
Oh no, that's up to you guys to do.
Oh, okay, we can, we can.
We're requesting that you give us that information as part of your application.
Oh, okay, not a problem. We can do that.
Yeah, it's just with the scenic overlay, and then it kind of gives us something clear and concise that we can see.
The other thing too, again, with this rendering, and I have to say, like, it is, it's, it's very realistic. Um. Um, you know, we can turn this into a, a little movie, this, this rendering, so this can be virtual. You know, so he can move this around. He can basically become. A drone and, you know, recess back and show you a completely wooded lot, and then where there would be a void where there's, you know. So he's doing it now, so that's kind of what. Again. You'd have to trust me that this is realistic, but we can do this with a drone as well.
I think you should, because that doesn't really give a sense of how the mountain and the, and the road work.
Okay.
And, and the point is, in the future, sometimes we need to put a drone up there to see if anything changed.
Exactly. Yeah, we need it for documentation.
Well, it's, the timing is pretty good that we could probably. Um, boy, if we were getting there soon, we could get it with the leaves on and then with the leaves off the trees too.
Good idea.
So.
I like that.
Okay.
All right, so, uh, if there's no other questions, uh, Melissa, we have to set up.
Yep.
Site visit.
Yep, we'll, uh, we'll work on that after we let Andrew.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for that presentation, and we'll, uh, we'll get back to you once we get our site visit, uh, members organized.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, thank you.
Yep. Okay, so now we have, uh, questions and answers. Uh, we have a meeting with Andrew Cappenelli for the proposed zoning amendments. So, uh, the board needs to discuss a memo to send to the town board with a review of this. So, um. Have you all, uh. Got some input to give?
But just keep that in mind, because we'll discuss it after you talk to Mr. Cappenelli. We want to turn it over to Mr. Cappenelli.
Sure.
Uh, good evening. Well, it's, it's a pleasure to see all of you, and, uh, I, I, I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak to all of you. Uh, this is my favorite part of handling, uh, these types of matters, because I've handled so many cases involving applications for wireless facilities and watched. Site developers and carriers, uh, have antistic antagonistic relationships with local planning boards. And try to intimidate them and threaten them and all kinds of good stuff like that. Um, I've been handling cell tower cases under the telecommunications act since it was adopted back in nineteen ninety-six. Fortunately, well, let me back up. When Congress enacted the telecommunications act of nineteen ninety-six. It actually considered giving the FCC the power to control the placement of wireless, of all wireless facilities. At the end of the day, it did pretty much the opposite. The first major provision of the federal telecommunications act is subparagraph C seven A. And under that paragraph, Congress preserved to state and local governments, the general authority to regulate the placement of wireless facilities within their jurisdiction. Armed with that power preserved to them by Congress, sophisticated local governments have adopted smart planning provisions. These are zoning ordinances designed to achieve three specific objectives simultaneously. The first is to enable carriers to saturate counties, towns and villages with personal wireless service coverage. Everybody loves their iPhone and their iPad. You need coverage for that. But at the same time, number two, you want to have them strategically placed. So you can minimize the number of towers and facilities you need to provide those services. And then third, you want to avoid, to the greatest extent possible, any unnecessary adverse impacts upon residential neighborhoods and residential homes. Caused by the irresponsible placement of wireless facilities. Now, the greatest challenge of enacting and enforcing provisions of this type. Is that you have to adopt the code, number one, to take hold of the powers that Congress preserved to you. So most local government codes, they adopt provisions that say, okay, if you want to build a cell tower or small cell or distributed antenna system, you have to apply for a permit. Most common permits are a use permit, special use permit, conditional use permit, and in most cases, they will go before a local planning board. And the process is pretty much the same. They file an application, they give notice to the property owners in closest proximity, and there's a public hearing. In addition to setting up that code, the biggest defect in most local zoning codes is. They don't give planning boards guidance as to how to comply. they don't give planning boards guidance as to how to comply with the procedural requirements, not just of your code, but the procedural requirements imposed upon you by subparagraph C seven B of the Telecommunications Act. And they impose a number of restrictions upon you, or I should say, requirements upon you when you're entertaining any application for the installation of new wireless facility, again, whether it's a cell tower, small cell, or distributed antenna system. By way of example, you have to decide your applications, no matter how you decide them, within a finite finite period of time, which is known as the shot clock. You have to understand, number one, how the shot clock works, when does it start, when does it end, how does it toll? And 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 how are you hamstring, what do you have to do? Very often, local governments don't decide cases within the shot clock period, they get sued and they lose. In cases where an applicant comes in, and specifically site developers, because right now across the United States, site developers are the ones installing the vast majority of facilities for the five G rollout. They will come to you, they will submit information very often, in fact, I would say in properly ninety percent of the cases, they'll submit information and materials to a planning board which is materially false. And they'll say, even if this proposed tower would violate your local zoning code, you have to grant it anyway. Because a denial would be an effective prohibition. And if you, if you effectively prohibit a carrier from providing wireless services, even if it's, it would violate your local zoning code, and you say, it violates the code, I can't grant it, if you don't do it the right way and make the factual determinations that you're required to make under federal law, they will sue you in federal court, they will win, and a federal judge will issue injunction saying you have to give them all the permits. So I've taken all of the knowledge I have in handling cell tower cases for the past twenty years, across the entire United States. I've taken all the decisions from federal courts, especially in the Second Circuit, which is where we are, and built it into a code which basically gives you clear and concise instructions on pretty much how to handle these cases. And to make sure that, number one, let me back up. This is not designed to prohibit the installation of wireless facilities, you shouldn't do that, and you don't want to do that. But it's designed to give you the maximum power to control where they go and how many there are. And in addition, to make sure that if and when you choose to deny an application for a specific facility, you do so in a manner which complies with all of the requirements of the Telecommunications Act. So that, number one, it reduces the likelihood that anybody's gonna file a federal lawsuit to try to challenge your decision, and even less likely that if they did so, they'd actually win. So that's what I did, that's the oversight. So is the code longer than most you've seen? Yeah. I believe that this is the best code, and I've been working on these provisions for more than a decade. Um, this gives you the maximum power to say, not to prevent them all, but to say yes or no. So rather than go through it, I'd rather just, I hope some of you have had a chance to read it, and I welcome the opportunity to answer any questions you may have. At first, it may look somewhat intimidating, like it puts a lot of burdens on the planning board, but it's actually not that bad. In fact, it's designed to make sure that at the outset, when an application is filed, the burden is placed upon the applicant to identify what type of application is filed, and based upon what type of application is filed, and what they're claiming their needs are, they have to give you everything you need to make a sophisticated, informed decision, they have to give it to you from the outset. Um, it's even designed so that if, God forbid, whoever receives these applications for the town is on vacation, and so it falls in the hands of someone who's never looked at one of these things before and doesn't know what to do, it kind of leads them by the hand to reduce to the greatest extent possible any chance you're gonna make a mistake and somehow violate the Telecommunications Act. So a lot of thought went into this, many hours went into this, and I hope I've directed it in a manner that it's clear enough that any of you can understand it. Um, I'm always more than willing to accept any critiques, any questions, any suggestions for improvement, so with that, I don't want to put you to sleep. I would ask if any of you have read it and have any questions, please, I'm here, ask me any question you have about this, or any question in cell tower law in general. I live, eat, and drink this stuff, so I I usually can answer pretty much any question you may have, so. With that, I open the floor, and I ask any board members, you have any questions, please ask me.
I do.
Thank you.
Um, how often are you dealing with a situation where the town owns the land and presumably the tower, and is leasing space on the tower? Which I think is our situation, if I'm understanding this correctly.
Okay, I I've done many, many, all types of scenarios. Um, I've dealt with scenarios where, and and it's not just towns, it's towns, counties, villages, I've been involved in cases where a town board wanted to lease space on their own property to put it there, and the ZBA turned down the application because it needed a variance, and there's a battle in between the town. The towns have very broad discretion as to what they want to do. First of all, under New York state law, as you probably know, if a town adopts a zoning code, it requires the town to then create a zoning board of appeals, and there's a separation of powers. So the town has the right to adopt the code, to change the code, but if there's a variance because a proposed facility would exceed a height limitation or a setback requirement, the town board has no power of that, it has to go to the the ZBA, and usually for a special use permit, it goes to the planning board. Um, where the town is acting as a landlord, it has a little even broader powers because um, it's acting in a proprietary capacity, so you can enter any terms you want with a owner of a wireless facility, or a site developer, a carrier that wants to put up a cell tower on a site owned by the town, and you're like any other landlord, for the most part. Um, I understand that you have had a lease, and you leased space for a facility on town-owned property, which is fine. Um, sometimes you then have problems because the tenants don't want to abide by the terms of the lease. I've seen many cases like that in the town battles, and for the most part, if it's handled properly, the town can enforce its rights. In addition, the town has the additional power in that if you choose to do so, the town can actually amend its code to exempt town-owned properties from the requirements of your own zoning code. You would do that, and then you can do whatever you want, I don't recommend it. I recommend that you have boards in place, such as the planning board and the ZBA, to make sure that any proposed tower does not inflict potential adverse impacts, which your code was specifically designed to protect against. So if the question is, go ahead.
Uh, the question came up the last time we dealt with one of these cases, that we have a number of different companies leasing space on the tower, and there's really no evidence that anybody is looking at the cumulative output of all of the different antennas. And that's one of the reasons that I asked the first question.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's a problem, and, um, the problem of RF emissions is is a huge problem, and I'll tell you exactly why. Whenever you have an application for wireless facility, one of the biggest objections that the residents want to discuss is potential health impacts, and it's a legitimate concern. I will tell you, I will tell you that every day, every week, I get calls from people who claim that they're sick from being exposed to RF radiation. Now, as I'm sure you know, one of the constraints that the Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six imposes upon local governments is that it says, "Local governments may not regulate applications for wireless facilities based upon environmental concerns, which in New York federal courts have said means health concerns, to the extent that a facility is FCC compliant." What does that mean? Well, in layman's terms, what it means is, if an applicant gives you proof that when a facility is built, it will not expose members of the general public to radiation levels which exceed what are known as the general population exposure limits, then you are not allowed to consider health impact or potential health impact when you're looking at zoning applications for wireless facilities. Now, the general population exposure limits are limits that were set by the FCC back in nineteen ninety-six. Um, they are the maximum levels of radiation to which federal law allows these companies that own and operate these facilities to expose members of the general public to. I will tell you, as we speak, there is federal litigation pending where people are challenging those limits, they don't think they're safe. The bigger problem for all local governments is whether you believe that the levels of, the RF levels adopted as safe by the FCC are safe or not, the bigger problem is the FCC is a practical matter, it's not enforcing those limits. When a facility is built, the FCC never ever tests the facilities, and never requires the owners to test the facilities. And the wireless companies know that, so they know if they expose people to greater levels of radiation, nobody will know. Now, several years ago, several governments got smart and said, you know what, that's no good, we can't rely on the FCC. The FCC's own website, they say, we don't have the rest resources to test the facilities. So local governments are their constituents' first and only line of defense against being exposed to excessive levels of radiation, so what have they done? Local governments have adopted random testing provisions in their local zoning codes. Remember, the telecommunications constraint says, you can't regulate based upon health to the extent that a facility is FCC compliant, meaning they're not exposing people to radiation levels which exceed the limits permitted by the FCC, what if they're not? In my view, if they exceed the limits, you then can do pretty much anything you want, you can regulate that any way you want. So a number of local governments, starting in California, I know the earlier, uh, local governments were the cities of Burbank, Berkeley, and Davies, that adopted random testing requirements, and pretty much what they say is this. We are going to randomly test the radiation coming off your facilities. We're gonna have an RF engineer come in, you, the owner of the facility, you're not gonna have any idea, because if you know when they're coming, you can turn down the power. And if we find that your facility is exceeding the FCC's limits, meaning you are exposing our constituents and homeowners to radiation levels that are illegal, there's gonna be a penalty. What would the penalty be? Some local governments simply say it's a financial penalty, we're gonna give you a five thousand dollar fine for first offense, twenty-five thousand for a second, whatever. The other avenue they'll often pursue is they'll say, we're gonna schedule a hearing for revocation of your permit. And you have to show cause at that hearing why we shouldn't revoke your permit and force you to rip down the facility, and not allow you to file any more applications for facility for a year. And they would have to show that the reason that the facility was exposing people to illegally excessive levels of radiation is because the equipment malfunctioned. And it wasn't a case where it's liberally powered up. I put a testing, a random testing provision in your code. What you choose to do in terms of enforcement is entirely up to you, you can set up a hearing process, you can do fines, I will tell you this. Merely having the random testing requirement in there is invaluable, because no carrier wants it to come out in the press that some town tested their facility and found that it was exposing people to illegally high levels of radiation, which even the FCC would admit is potentially dangerous to the health of others. So simply by having that in your code, it gives you tremendous protection against being exposed to illegally excessive levels of RF radiation. That testing would also reflect if the combined emissions from a multitude of facilities would exceed the limits. It's legitimate, it's a legitimate concern, and that's the way you protect against that.
Does anybody know if we have it in our code?
Um, I did propose it in your code, I'm pretty sure it's in here, hold on one second, uh, should be page forty-two of my copy. Yes, um, in section, where am I, forty-three, I'm in section forty-two. In section forty-two of the code, this empowers the town to conduct random testing of each facility um, and the radiation levels going from there, so you can test it as often you want. The biggest danger in enacting something like this, and and I will tell you, most local municipal attorneys, their biggest fear is always drafting a code that's gonna get the town sued, and I want to talk about that for a second. The bad news is, if you get sued under the Telecommunications Act and you lose, the the prevailing party who wants to put up a wireless facility will get an order from a judge ordering you to let them put up the the facility. The good news is, that's all they get. If you ever get sued under the Telecommunications Act and lose, you don't pay them a penny, you don't pay them damages, you don't pay them attorney's fees. So all you lose is the ability to stop the tower. Now, the easiest and least the one, the the type of provision that bears the less risk to the town is if the town pays for the testing. Okay? If you step up a little bit and you're willing to take on a little more risk, you can say, you know what? We want to be able to do the test of your facilities at least once a year, and we want the owner of the facility to test that, to pay for that. Okay, and by the way, the testing can be done for as little as maybe four or five hundred dollars per test. Um, once you start imposing that cost upon the owner of the facility, they start threatening lawsuits. Will they sue for five hundred dollars? Probably not. But if you say, you know what, we're gonna test every single one of your facilities every year at five hundred dollars per test, and you have a distributed antenna system with forty-two nodes, and so it's gonna cost you ten thousand dollars a year, they're gonna sue you. So right now, you have the ability to do the random testing in this code. And I think that's pretty good and usually sufficient to make sure they're gonna make sure they stay on the straight and narrow, their individual facilities are not gonna exceed the FCC's limits. The other problem, of course, is even if any individual unit doesn't exceed the FCC's limits, the, um, the chairwoman is correct to say, well, what about the combined RF emissions of multiple facilities, and that is a concern. If you put four carriers on one facility, especially if they, if they, if they crank up to five G, which generally put out far greater power output, you definitely have the risk of exceeding the FCC's limits, limits through the combination. So it's a very real concern. Yes.
Yeah, Stuart, look, you're a member of the board, so, um, in the context of eligible facilities requests, which we do get several per year, um, that's the context in which this, um, individual carrier, um, exposure output versus aggregate came up, and, uh, the individual carrier will say, well, we don't know what the other carriers who are on the tower are putting out. But the, but the, uh, company that manages the tower and, uh, for the town, I would think would have access to that data for all of the carriers on the tower. Is there a way that we could, uh, require the the individual applicant to provide us the, um, aggregate data, because all they give us is, they give us a certi- an engineer's certification that their proposed equipment change will be within FCC limits, but it doesn't tell us what the aggregate impact will be.
You know, it's an interesting question, nobody's asked me that question in twenty years, it's a very intelligent question. Um, most attorneys never think of that, and the the answer is this. Um, it's somewhat unclear, I think you can get away with asking for that information, I think you can force their engineer to give you calculations for the combined exposure from these these multiple facilities, and the reason I say that is federal courts say, as long as it's FCC compliant, they're not exceeding the FCC's limits, you can't consider health, you can't regulate that. However, federal courts have said you do have the right to force them to produce evidence that they won't be exceeding the FCC's limits. Now, when I talk about forcing them to produce evidence, the general rule of thumb under federal law is that whenever you're making determinations on an application for a permit for a wireless facility, as long as your code gives the planning board the power to do so, it's the planning board that gets to decide what evidence they will require an applicant to produce. So for example, if they say, you know, um, uh, we have a significant gap in service, if your code, as this one does, gives you the power to request that, require them to produce sufficient probative evidence to enable you to determine as a question of fact whether or not a specific carrier has a gap in service, then you have the right to ask for that. So I think you would have the right to demand that any applicant produce an engineer who's gonna give you the calculations for the combined RF emissions. I don't know anybody who's ever done it before, but it's a brilliant idea, because it's reality. You may have a situation where each transmitter individually doesn't exceed the FCC's limits, but the combined effect does, and I think you can demand that.
And also, in our case in Woodstock, uh, the Crown Castle entity that operates the tower as agent for the town, I I would assume they have access to all this data, and I don't know why the town board couldn't, uh, as part of their relationship uh, with Crown Castle, require production of that data anytime it's asked for, if they have it, it seems to me. Um, I want to ask a couple other questions, if I may, you indicated that the FCC standard is under challenge, and I'm aware of that in the in the D.C. Circuit, there's that case, and I'm also aware that, um, both the FCC and the Second Circuit um, have upheld the right of municipalities that own a communication tower um, to negotiate more stringent standards for exposure from, then, then the FCC, the one adopted by the FCC. So I'm wondering, does, does the code that you've now drafted, does that treat all towers the same in terms of, as long as they comply with the FCC, there's not an issue? And does that include the municipal we own tower in the town of Woodstock, or is there a carve-out for, uh, the town's town-owned tower, because should there be a carve-out to protect the town's ability to, um, negotiate more stringent limits on, on exposure?
Okay, so I have to make a distinction now, because there is nothing in the code that treats towers differently on properties that are owned by the town, and there's a specific reason for that. Now, when you talk about, um, putting restrictions on RF emissions under a lease, yes, I'll I'll give you a perfect example. Um, there's the Sprint case, and the Sprint case, which I think was White Plains, um, a cell tower company wanted to put a cell tower on top of a school, a school, uh, building.
Building, yes.
And so what happened was, the school board said, okay, we're gonna let you put a cell tower up there, but under the lease, we're gonna put a limit on the RF emissions that the tower's gonna be able to admit. And Sprint said, fine, and they agreed to that, and they built the tower, and everything was good for probably six months. Then Sprint came back to the school board and said, you know what? We have new technology, we have to exceed those limits, and we don't think you can. We have new technology. We have to exceed those limits. And we don't think you can enforce that lease. Because under federal law, only the FCC can set limits on RF emissions. And they went to federal court. And in that case, the school district won. And it's interesting. The school district won because the federal court ruled that in entering that lease, the school district was not acting in a regulatory capacity. It was acting in a proprietary capacity, just like any commercial landlord. So the FCC places restraints on authorities that are acting in a regulatory capacity when deciding zoning applications. Permits, variances, site plan approvals. Okay? So you've got entities that operate in proprietary capacities and those which act in regulatory capacities. Now here's the slippery slope for a town. If a town does not exempt its own properties from its local zoning code, and a town wants to enter a lease to allow somebody to put a cell tower on their property, they can do so. If they don't claim an exemption, and if the town board doesn't say, we're gonna decide the permits, the town is acting purely in a proprietary capacity. Okay? So they can negotiate any terms they want with whoever wants to build the tower. So you can say, we're gonna lay space for you for a tower at town hall, but we want to put a limit on RF emissions. Now, we'll tell you, often they challenge that. If however, you put a provision in your code that says, and by the way, if it's on town property, we're gonna put a limit on emissions. You are now placing yourself in a position where they can say, you're not really acting in a proprietary capacity anymore. You may own the property. But now you're acting in a regulatory capacity, and now you cannot enforce any limits on the RF emissions. So you have to try to maintain separate hats. If you don't, I guarantee you, they'll try to say, you're in a regulatory capacity now, and you can't regulate radiation levels.
Couldn't there be a carve-out to the extent that the town has a proprietary right to restrict the emissions level below the FCC? Couldn't there be a carve-out to that effect to protect their proprietary right while still?
You don't, you don't need it in your zoning code. You don't need it in your regulation. You have that right as a commercial landlord.
So then it would be up to the town fathers or mothers.
Whoever has authority to sign a lease, to lease out town-owned property for a commercial purpose. They would have the power to negotiate the terms that they find acceptable.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Mr. Laval.
We, is there a set of standards that we can look at? I mean, our tower is fairly remote. So since radiation decreases in inverse square manner, how do we determine at what point we can start measuring?
Well, you can measure it anytime. Again, if they exceed the FCC's limits, what they're doing is illegal. The type of tower, if, go ahead.
In other words, since it distances a critical factor to what not, they're exceeding the limit.
Yes.
How do we know where to measure?
An RF engineer would know exactly how to do that. That's why you hire an RF engineer. I'm familiar with the tower. If I'm not mistaken, it's a giant monopine, right? It's supposed to be a fake tree?
Correct.
Right. The biggest problem with these facilities is the eligible facilities request. If I call correctly, and by the way, I have dealt with Crown Castle across the entire United States. They are extremely well financed. They are very sophisticated. They also happen to be the most aggressive site development company that I've ever encountered. To my knowledge, they don't provide any personal wireless service. They are strictly a site development company. And right now, they're racing with the other site development companies. In this case, in New York, the biggest race between Crown Castle and Exponent. And they're racing with each other to build as many 5G facilities as possible, as quickly as possible. And they go first to the local governments where they have the weakest local zoning codes, where it's the easiest to just run over them. And in cases like yours, what they'll do is they'll say, well, I have an eligible facility request. I'm gonna add some new antennas. But the new equipment they're doing for 5G, the antennas are massive. In your case, if I recall correctly, they were gonna put these new antennas out on T bars. And each transmitter, if I recall correctly, was like two foot by eight foot, which means each one had sixteen square feet of flat surface area. And they wanted to put nine of them. So it was something like one hundred and forty-six feet of flat surface area pointing out from this fake tree, which would be like the equivalent of several boards of plywood. And when they do that, the greatest power of the town to turn them down is to say that that would destroy the concealment facets of the fake tree. The whole reason for the fake tree is to be a stealth installation. It's supposed to look like a fake tree and blending in. In fact, if I recall correctly, when the town negotiated that agreement for that tower, one of the requirements was that it would be a fake tree, so that it would be stealth. By putting on these new facilities, it's not an eligible facility because it would defeat the stealth design of the tower. And right now, in most cases, because the 5G equipment is so large, your easiest way to challenge him is to say, wait a minute, it's not eligible because that's not stealth. And you can win pretty much every time on that stuff.
Just for your information, the town conceded to the first five years of the lease in order for them to make the transformation from a standard tower to a stealth tower.
Okay.
So that cost the township $25,000 at that time.
Yep. Yep. And that's substantial consideration. And in exchange for that, the consideration you received is that they were supposed to construct and maintain it as a stealth facility. And by adding those monstrous new antennas, you were being deprived of the benefit of your bargain. Again, in a proprietary capacity. So as in a proprietary capacity, you have contractual right to say you can't do that. In a regulatory capacity, you can say, we're not required to recognize this as an eligible facility because the addition of these facilities defeats the stealth design. So in both capacities, you have the power to stop them. Is anybody still awake?
Yes. I just want to clarify one thing. The planning board is not a proprietor of anything. We are strictly a regulatory body in this area.
Of course, yes. I'm the town board.
Town board has the proprietary rights, so it's up to them how much they want to exercise it.
Correct.
Laura has her hand up, Andrew. She just, she had a point she wanted to make.
Please.
Yeah, I was just hoping, I'm not a member of the planning board, so I am a guest, but thank you for calling on me. I just wanted to mention, as Chair of the Zoning Revision Committee, in cases of interest to the planning board. Well, first of all, a huge thank you to Andrew Campanelli for bringing us this law. Before coming to you, it did come to the Zoning Revision Committee. I can tell you, we went through it with a fine-tooth comb ourselves. We spent time as Chair of the Zoning Revision Committee. I personally made updates that were agreed upon by the ZRC and also Andrew. I didn't change anything that Andrew didn't bless and know about. And I do want to thank Andrew for giving us a very thorough law. I think it's great. It's long. It's almost fifty pages long. It seems a little scary, but it's so well organized. I do think it's workable. So I just want to let the planning board know that our committee, ZRC, was six people at that point. I know I read every word, and I think we had a lot of team members that did. So it has been combed through before it came to you. I appreciate the thoroughness of all the questions you planning board members are asking because they are excellent questions. So I want to say thank you for that. And the last thing I did just want to mention is, and also a thank to Steve Romine for bringing us Andrew Campanelli. So that's another thank you. But I don't know how long the planning board process takes to get a response back to the town board. My hope is that the town board can get the response. As soon as we get the response, I'm gonna push to get the public hearing scheduled because right now, the law covers large tower. It doesn't cover small tower at all. And so this, the small wireless facility at all. So the sooner we can get a public hearing and get this law in place, the sooner we'll have a law that can help us with 5G. So I did just want to mention, and I have total respect for the planning board, Peter and everybody on the planning board, and I know you'll work the process as you need to do it because your role is so important. But just also want to mention, as soon as we as the planning board, as the town board get it, I want to push for the public hearing and push to be law because there's a big gap in the law right now until we get this. So so thank you for entertaining it and all the wonderful questions. And thank you for Andrew for all the wonderful answers.
Thank you, Laura. John has his hand up.
Yes, Jim.
John has a question?
No, I just wanted to thank Laura and Mr. Campanelli and Steve Romine. And because I think everybody's done their homework on this, and this looks good. And I think we can move forward.
There's just one final thing I'd like to say, because again, I appreciate the opportunity to view you, to meet with you. I mean, to me, for years having done this, the planning boards are the omen. You're the first line of defense. You're the ones who do the most for protecting your constituents. And I drafted this to incorporate an enormous number of protections for the planning board. Some things that you would think are completely innocuous. For example, one thing that always irked me is that local planning board members, they don't know very much about RF emissions as a general rule. And so applicants will come in like Crown Castle, and they'll submit what are known as FCC compliance reports. And you get some fancy-looking report where they calculate what the radiation levels are gonna be. One of the things that really, really ticks me off is that very often, and I'm not saying any specific, I'm not identifying Crown Castle or anybody else. But very often, the FCC compliance reports are completely false. And they know they're false. They falsify them. And the two most common ways they falsify them are this. First of all, they'll come in and say, this facility is gonna be, the radiation levels are gonna be within the FCC's limits. But what they don't tell you is, I've mentioned the general population exposure limits, but there are actually two very different sets of limits. There is one set called the general population exposure limits, but there's also a higher set of limits that are called the occupational exposure limits. These are radiation limits reserved for people who are working on the cell towers and who make a conscious decision to expose themselves to much higher levels of radiation. And very often what they'll do is they'll bring in an engineer who says, oh, this thing's gonna be within the FCC's limits. What they don't tell you is they're referring to the occupational exposure limits and not the general population exposure limits. I've had cases where they said to the board, it's gonna be within FCC's limits. And I forced them to say, which limits? They said, the general population. Okay, would the radiation level be below or above the general population exposure limits? And they said, it would exceed them. I said, by how much? Six to seven hundred percent. In other cases, they falsify what's called the minimum distance factor. As you know, the closer you get to a transmitter, the level of radiation to which you get exposed increases exponentially. So when they do these FCC compliance reports, they do a calculation. The starting factor is the distance factor. How close can anybody get to the transmitter? To falsify the whole calculation on the entire report, alls they do is falsify that factor, and they bury it in the report. So if there's an antenna on a flat roof and a people living underneath an apartment could get to within six feet of the tower of the facility, instead of saying six feet, they'll say eighty-five feet, referring to the house that's behind them. And so the entire FCC compliance report is false, and they know it. But a local board doesn't know it. So I have in here that they have to disclose those things to you. There are so many tricks and things they use to deceive planning boards. All of this is specifically designed to protect you, the planning board, so they can't deceive you. So I just wanted to get that out there. So you look at stuff that looks weird, like, why is this in here? I assure you, I spent a lot of time protecting planning boards because you guys do a yeoman's job. Very often with little gratitude in return. So I really respect what you do. And with that, unless you have any, yes.
Which is the more restrictive standard, the occupational or the general population? Which is more restrictive?
The general population is tremendously more restrictive, much, much more restrictive. And so they'll come in and literally say, oh, yeah, it's within the FCC's limits, and they refer to the wrong sets of limits. Yes, Ms. Kerman.
And if we catch them in that, can we deny their eligible facilities request?
Yes.
On that basis?
Yes. Ms. Kerman.
Yeah, the question that John asked before, I think I'm still not exactly sure. Is there a standard in the law or in the industry for how far you are from the facility when you take the measurement?
Again, it's when you take the measurements, first of all, it's as close you can get to the facility. At no time should you be able to get physically close enough to a facility that the radiation level to which you would be exposed would exceed the general population.
Just walk up to the fence, and the fence says no entry. That's the place where you take the reading.
Yes.
Okay, the other question is, you mentioned facility a lot. You're talking about the individual antenna installation and not the tower, because the tower has multiple antennas on it.
The facility is included, is considered the entire facility and all the antennas on it. So a single cell tower and the compound and the boxes and the generator is a single wireless facility.
Thank you.
Mr. Romine, did you, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Nicole Nevin has actually messaged me and asked if she could talk. So if she's on, she's more than welcome to take. But Steve can go first. Steve, you gotta unmute yourself.
Okay, I'm unmuted. Hi, Andrew. Hi, everybody. Just first, I want to say is that bringing Andrew to the planning board and the town board was a group effort. I didn't do it alone. I had a group effort. We all worked together to make this happen. So I want to give everybody credit. Not just me. And also, my question to Andrew is, Andrew, is it true that there's a statute called US forty-seven, US Code three twenty-four, use of minimum power that states in all circumstances, all radio stations shall use the minimum amount of power necessary to carry out the communications desired? And if so, should we have that in the code that, you know, you can't use more than the minimum amount of power?
I generally advise local governments not to put that in there because, number one, you wouldn't know what they're using. You wouldn't know if they're exceeding the minimum power, number one. Number two, even if they are transmitting at a power higher than what they actually need, I guarantee you, they will bring an engineer who will say, oh, no, that's the minimum power. We can't do with anything less than that. And so what are you gonna do? In every case, are you gonna hire your own engineers? If you bring in two, they'll bring in three. There's really very little benefit to be derived by putting a restriction in that. It just brings you in a slippery slope. The good news is that the combination of everything else I put in there more than covers that. I assure you, random testing is gonna do that. So could you put something in there? Yeah. It would be longer than it is already. You might get up to sixty pages. But the reality is, the town really wouldn't derive any benefit from that. So oh, there is one final thing I'd like to share with you, just to give you an idea of what you're dealing with. The newest game that I find with the wireless companies is very often zoning codes will say, okay, the applicant, if they're eligible to sell tower.
Eligible facilities request.
Okay. So the applicant's gonna build a cell tower. They have to get a special permit. There's gonna be a hearing. And the code says the applicant has to serve notice to all property owners within fifteen hundred feet by certified mail return receipt request. The newest game they play is really remarkable. The code doesn't say what they have to write on the envelope or what it has to say. And so the latest thing I find is they will hire a mailing company to do the mailing. They'll do it. But when they send out the notice, which has a notice inside an envelope about this public hearing, the outside of the notice, the sender's return address is XYZ Marketing Corp. with an address. It is addressed to the property owner, but it's addressed occupant with the address of the home. And instead of a stamp, it has the ink stamp that said bulk mail postage paid. It is absolutely designed to look like junk mail. If you got something in the mail, you take your mail and you look at it, it says occupant. And the return address literally says XYZ Marketing Corp. And there's no stamp, there's an ink stamp that says bulk postage paid. What are you gonna do with it? Everybody throws it out. And yet, they sign an affidavit saying, we mailed notices, and here's a copy of the letter, and we mailed it to every property owner within fifteen hundred feet, and yet nobody shows up with a planning board here. And the reason is, it was designed to make sure they all believed it was junk mail. That's why in the code, your code says they have to put on the outside in at least twelve-point size font or bold, notice of hearing for new personal wireless facility, so they can't play that game. There are a dozen Easter eggs like that built into this code. I really worked hard. I believe this is the best code in the nation. And I've drafted it for local governments from New York to California to Idaho to Washington. This is a good code. And so I hope you're satisfied with it. And by the way, after it's adopted, our relationship doesn't necessarily end. You're on the planning board. If you ever pose with an idea, with a question, and you don't know the answer, I tell my local officials all the time, pick up the phone and call me. I'll answer your question. I don't charge anything. I consider it a privilege to help you. So with that, if there's no more questions, I'm ready to sign off, but I'm willing to stay as long as you'd like to keep me.
Andrew, we had two more public. I had Nicole, who wants to talk to you, and Rex. So if you guys could just hurry it up, Andrew. Andrew, I want to thank you. I asked you to come, and you did, and you showed up, and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
You're quite welcome. Thank you.
Nicole and Rex.
Hi, Andrew. This is Nicole. I have a question about the telecom industries that have already gotten their eligible facility requests passed due to the fact that apparently there was nothing we could do about it. And I'm not understanding And I'm not understanding clearly whether or not this new code slash law is going to give the planning board more power to turn these types of requests down or not.
Okay, well, under federal law, if it's an eligible facilities request, there's a very tight time constraint within what you must act and the town's authority is limited. The first question, the first issue you look at is, does the proposed new installation in fact meet the requirements for an eligible facility? I think it's five of them. And what I'm finding is in the realm of 5G, the additional equipment tends to be substantially larger and tends to give out much greater power output. And so the first thing you look at is, does it defeat the stealth, any stealth aspect of the facility? Or does it substantially increase the overall size of the facility? If the answer to either of those questions is yes, then the town board has the power to, I mean, shoot me. The planning board has the power to say no. So that's the best way I can answer that question.
They're saying no to that question. So they've already made this happen and apparently, and they're saying it's forged, the same type of output as 4G and then they're denying that it's upgradable to 5G. They won't commit to that either way.
No, they won't. And you can't really, you can't regulate whether it's on 4G or 5G, but you can regulate upon a wide range of other considerations. You know, you are the planning board. This is the planning board. The planning board can regulate for any. If somebody wanted to build a 15 story tower in their backyard, the planning board have a lot to say about it. I mean, I listened to the whole hearing on the house they want to build on a steep slope. And you discussed everything from the color of the roof to tree, the visibility through the trees. Well, you should, for the most part, treat an application for a cell tower pretty much the same way. You can and should consider things like adverse aesthetic impacts, reduction in property values. Is it out of character with the community? Does it have a sufficient fall zone? Is it even necessary? Is it consistent with smart planning? You have tremendous power to regulate the placement of these facilities as long as your code says you do, and this code says you do.
Because they're just saying that they're just upgrading what's already there.
That, well, the biggest problem with the site developers, very often they don't bother. They'll just come and build it and say, you don't like it, sue us. And again, I try to cover that here. I can't physically stop it, but they do it all the time, all over the country. I've had cases where they just went without getting a permit and actually put a cell tower on someone's front lawn. And I'm not talking about two inches onto the front lawn. I'm talking a 30 foot cell tower, 16 feet onto someone's front lawn. And the theory was there was a public utility easement over their property and they're a public utility. So they had the right to put a 30 foot cell tower on a young couple's front lawn. I've seen everything. Rex?
Okay, thanks. I was curious regarding the, if the power output discussion. If, let's say that the town opted to measure the total hour power output from the tower and it went over, would that give the town the ability to revoke all of those permits?
It's a good question. In theory, it would have the power to stop the most recent installation. So if you've got three facilities in there and they're below the power, and now they want to put a fourth one and the combined RF emissions would exceed the FCC's limits, in theory, you could say, I'm not giving you the permit, or you could revoke the last permit if your code says so. Again, you get to choose what remedy you want to have available. Do you want to give them a fine or do you want to revoke their permit? The only problem, of course, is once a permit is issued, under New York state law, that's a property right. And under the Federal Civil Rights Act, no one can be deprived of a property right without due process of law. So once you issue someone a permit, if you want to revoke that permit, you cannot do that without first affording them a notice and an opportunity to be heard. So you'd want some type of hearing. So you could schedule a hearing before the planning board where they would be required to show cause why their permit should not be revoked. Showing cause would not mean they can say, well, it's just the power added up. No, they'd have to show that the equipment malfunctioned, that it was not through any intentional act of theirs that their equipment then exposed members of the general public to radiation levels which were illegal. They literally exceeded the maximum levels of radiation permitted by the FCC and federal code.
So is there a provision in what you're proposing?
Yes, there's a provision for random testing, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Kerman.
So in the last case where this issue of cumulative power actually came up, we really didn't have any basis for saying, you, Crown Castle, have to provide us with the data proving that this new installation isn't going to exceed the total. And under the current, under the code that you're proposing, we would have that.
I think that you would have it nonetheless. I think you could be able to file a complaint with the FCC. On the other hand, good luck with the FCC. I mean, they are.
Yeah.
I'm going to go so far as to say, is there the handmade in the wireless industry? As far as I'm concerned, they're captive agents.
But what happened in the instance was that they said, gee, we don't know.
I get it. Hang on. So they have to certify that initial certification at the time they build it, that it's going to be within the FCC's limits. And then they have to repeatedly tell you that, hang on. Yeah. So if you find that they're exceeding the FCC's limits, you can demand that they come into compliance. And then you can schedule a hearing before the planning board. We have the right to revoke their permit. Now, above and beyond that, you can also file a complaint with the FCC and quite frankly, I would do that. Because then it's going to place the FCC in the untenable position of saying, okay, we know that if the radiation levels are above these limits, we know they're dangerous to health. Okay? So now this local government is telling us that the cumulative effect of all these antennas are exceeding those limits and thus they're a public safety hazard. What are we going to do? They have the right to revoke the applicant's license to maintain that facility. So they can say to Crown Castle, listen, you know what? We got an engineer that's saying, if you put it up there, it's going to exceed the FCC's limits. We're going to tell you, we are going to tell you, forget about the town board, the planning board. We, the FCC, are going to tell you, Crown Castle, you can't put that facility there. And quite frankly, I would fight for that.
But let me ask you, as a, for instance, if we had said to them last time,
Right.
We know there's a shot clock going on this, but you have to prove to us that this new upgrade that you're doing is not going to put you out of compliance. Could we have done that?
It's a totally gray area. Nobody, I'm aware of anybody who's done that before. I would think that if you got an RF engineer and your own RF engineer did a test and you tested the existing radiation level and the RF engineer would say, listen, I looked at their calculations. If you add that, you're going to exceed the limits. I think that would give you a basis to say you can't put it there.
Okay, so we would have to, within the timeframe of the shot clock, get somebody in there to do a reading and do the calculations.
Because I'd be perfectly comfortable walking to a federal judge's chambers, and I've been all across the country in federal judges' chambers. I've been in the middle of the federal courts covering 23 states. I am perfectly comfortable walking into a judge's chamber, say, Judge, I'm just a lawyer. I'm not an RF engineer. But the town went to the trouble of getting their own RF engineer. He tested the radiation level. And he said, based upon their calculations, that if you add this other antenna, now they're going to exceed the FCC's, but it's literally going to expose people to illegally excessive levels of radiation, which takes out the exception that says local governments can't regulate based upon radiation, because that only applies when the radiation level is within the legal limits. Now you're going to be on those limits and they have the right to protect their constituents and they have a right to say no. You can't expose them to legally excessive levels of radiation and no federal judge, I think, is going to disagree with me.
See, they always talk to us as if their current application is the only thing in question.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yes, Mr. Laval.
Okay, how do you do this within that relative frame of the shot clock?
Yep. Well, it's good to speak to RF engineers and to have one on call. And you got to do that soon because, you know, most of the RF engineers that are good, they work for the wireless industry. So you got to find one that's willing to do the testing. They're out there and you can find them. And if they know they have a solid gig, you know, maybe there's one engineer that just now is going to do testing for local governments throughout the state of New York. He's going to have a steady income. He's going to have a steady work, he or she. So maybe you talk to other towns and say, this is a great idea. You know, as I'm saying this to you, as these words are coming out of my mouth, I consult with the New York State Association of Towns. They come to me for all kinds of help on these issues. I may recommend to them that they open the conversation among the towns to say, hey, let's all get together and see if we can convince one RF engineer to do our testing for us. Because they have plenty of work to do and then it's worth it for them financially.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, yes, Mr. Bleelock.
You're on mute.
You have to unmute yourselves. Weston, you have to unmute yourself.
All right. Good evening. So you're aware of the guidelines, the health guidelines are currently under review because of that court case.
Children's Health Defend case in the DC Circuit.
Right, so. So are there any cases that you're involved in where, with municipalities, where a zoning board can invoke these unreliable FCC guidelines? So that's another avenue perhaps to reject any application at this point, surely.
Well, the problem is that that litigation is going to last years and years. The FCC will tie that up in litigation forever. The biggest thing that's going on right now are ADA challenges. Okay? So there are people who are adversely impacted by exposure to RF radiation, far more than average people. They are EMS sensitive. I have a case pending before the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals right now. There was an individual, the case is called Wolf versus the City of Millbrae. There was an individual had a unit on the top floor of a condominium complex. A wireless company put in a cell tower where the transmission antennas were probably six feet from his bedroom. He got so ill that his doctor said, you have to get out of there. His professional physician, who has knew his medical history, said, you are suffering the classic signs of overexposure to microwave radiation. You must move out of your unit. I made a demand under the federal ADA, the Americans with Disabilities Act, taking the position that he is EMS sensitive and thus is disabled within meaning of the act. And as a result, he's entitled to a reasonable accommodation. I served a demand upon the city and the owner of the facility to make a reasonable accommodation. Now, what that would be is would be determined by the city, either moving it far enough away that it wouldn't adversely impact his health when he was inside his own home, or perhaps reduce the power output. The city refused to do anything, so I sued them in federal court in the Northern District of California. The federal judge most likely realized that if she ruled in our favor, there'd be a whole lot of lawsuits being filed. So she refused to determine whether or not EMS sensitivity is a disability under the ADA. And she refused to determine whether the TCA precludes enforcement of the ADA. Instead, she said, she punted, she said, well, I'm not going to say the TCA preempts the ADA. What I'm going to say is you're asking a city to regulate based upon health. That is illegal and so I'm dismissing the case. I appeal that to the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. I will likely be flying to San Francisco in either December or January to fight that case. But my opinion is that that's a mishap understanding of the law and they misframe the issue. The issue is this. The TCA is clearly indicates it's not intended to preempt federal law and it wasn't intended to preempt the ADA. So one of the things towns are facing is what do you do if somebody files an application and a constituent serves the demand that you comply with the ADA? It placed the town in the position where under the ADA, you are supposed to now make two determinations. One, is the person disabled? And number two, if they are, what would a reasonable accommodation be? And so you're on the crosshairs where you're going to end up in a federal court somewhere on this. Hopefully, the Wolf case is going to resolve this in a way that's favorable to the towns. So. But right now, yes, do I believe the levels deemed safe by the FCC are safe? No way, no way, no how. I know too many cases where people are getting sick. The facts of the case present overwhelming circumstantial evidence that the sickness is caused directly by the exposure to RF emissions, even at levels deemed safe by the FCC. But I'm not taking that fight on because it's being fought in a federal court elsewhere. But the truth is, it's probably going to take eight to 10 years to get resolved. So all I can do is give local governments the maximum power to control these things and to grant or deny applications for their installation on a case by case basis and to make them aware that they should test these things to exhibit as much control of the RF radiation as federal law allows. And that's what I tried to do with this ordinance.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? All right. With that, I want to thank you for your time. I appreciate the effort, the opportunity to speak to you. And again, my proverbial door is always open. I'm going to give you my phone number, my office phone number. If any of you find you have a question that you don't know where to find the answer to, I'd be happy to take your call. And again, I don't charge. So here's my phone number, if you care to write it down. It's 516-746-1600. If you have a question and can't find the answer, pick up the phone and give me a call.
Thank you very much, Andrew.
Welcome. With that, I leave you all. Have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
Oh, it's up to the planning board now to, at some point, put together a memo to send to the town board how they feel about this proposed new amendment. So Stuart probably is the lead in this.
Well, my own view is that I support adoption of the proposed changes. I don't know that I would want to say anything more than that. I'm supportive of what's being proposed. But I don't speak further to the board, so.
I agree.
That's what I was going to say. Can we agree? And I will, I'll send the memo early next week. Is that all right?
Brian, you on board?
Yeah, I'm called up.
James? James Talon?
Yes, I'm bored with it.
Yes.
Okay. Any other board members haven't spoken up on this?
I think we all said yes.
Yeah, okay.
I'll take care of that next week. Thank you. Laura, you'll have that. I'll make sure you get that email too.
Okay, thank you so much. And thank you, everybody. You guys are so thorough, wonderful. So thank you so much for what you did here, but what you do at all times as well. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, thank you for everybody on that. So last two things we have in unfinished business is if we're willing to make a motion regarding the draft resolutions for DuPont and Barron and Leeds and Philin Roots.
You're muted.
Stuart?
Yeah, I had to catch up to the agenda. Okay, so I make a motion that the planning board approves. The resolutions as drafted for the case of Jesse Cullen, DuPont and Lindsay Delpias, SUP 22-0668. And in the case of Jack Barron, B-A-R-R-N, and Linda Lee's and Joseph T. Fallon and Marion Ruiz, planning board case number 22-1234. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. Most of the resolutions are approved.
Thank you, Stuart.
So one last issue is the site visit update reminder that Saturday, October 22nd at 10:00 AM on Eastern Lane for the Woodsey Mac Timber Harvest, which is the second site visit. So hope to see as many of you there as we can.
I just want to go through, we had a few pending site visits, Peter, so I'm just going to take the lead here. Peter graciously went to our wetlands and water course and did the site visit. So we're bringing him back for a public hearing and before we have the public hearing, we'll do a quick wetlands and findings review. So that'll be next meeting. The Irkman Sport Court, I had Stuart and James. Did either of you go look?
My, I didn't have a car for three days this week and then today I was home all day with a, getting a brand new furnace. So I haven't been able to, I was going to get out of the house this week to do it and I just couldn't actually, physically couldn't.
James, I'm sorry that you have my bad luck.
So James, are you?
I can do it next week if that's not too late.
Yeah, that works for me too. So maybe, James, if you could, I'm sorry, let Melissa know what days are good for you and she can reach out to me and we can match up a time.
Oh, sure. Okay.
I'll drive up or you'll drive up and we'll go.
I'll have to wait till like Monday to sort of make sense in my week, but I'll figure it out on Monday.
Okay, all right. And Melissa, if you can be like to go between and then I'll set it up and we'll do it next week.
Absolutely. Just both of you guys, just, we did approve the house. So we were up there before, did request a waiver because it is just a sport court, so just something to keep in mind when you go for the site visit.
Okay.
That's a possibility. The next one, we don't have Connor here, so scratch that. We didn't hear that. I need volunteers to rent a helicopter and go to the top of California quarry.
I'm not joking. I mean, that's a challenge.
I would love to do this, but I have a friend who lives on Rockledge and every time I drive up there, I can smell my tires and my brakes, like when I get out of the car. And I just got four new tires and I really don't like to go higher up. They took me up there once and I was like almost throwing up.
It's scary. It is.
I just don't think I can do it with my car.
I can, I can, we can try to get the electric car and go if you want, we'll use the town car.
Not mine.
Just a suggestion, the town's electric car, we can give it a whirl. I may have to ask Butch to drive because it sounds steeper enough for me to not want to drive, but yes. Who's willing to go? We need a few to meet and let them know.
As, as John Lavelle knows, that's a subdivision that never should have happened. But it is, I mean, I, you know, it's steep slopes. It's, it's everything, but it's, it's, it's the worst drive. I've been up there and it's scary. I tell you. So.
I wasn't kidding when I said to them, do you intend to live there in the winter? I was not kidding.
I didn't think you were.
They're not going to be in the winter.
That's my thought. It's like, let's get this site visit done now before the snow.
Well, yeah, another week it'll be icy up there.
Oh, God.
Well, Paul Schultes would never have, you know, turned his head away from this long. He would have gone right up there with the truck.
Yeah, right.
You know, one of the past, the chairman of the board of this board who went up there twice for site visits ruined his car.
I know. That's what I mean. I, I just put out all this money on my car. I don't want to risk it. I would love to see the site because it looks just shocking, but.
Yeah.
I don't know what to do.
I don't know what to say, Melissa, because I'm telling you, I, I, I wouldn't want to put any board members' vehicles to the risk of it.
Do we, do we want to try to like, maybe we can coordinate an afternoon and maybe Butch can drive a few of us up? Seriously.
Somebody else drives and I don't have to get out.
I'd be willing to do that.
And you guys, and wear blinders, believe me. Wear blinders. Don't be able to look out the window.
Oh, listen, I went up, I went up to Montevideo, which is the, in Costa Rica in a bus and it's a dirt road. So.
All right. Well, we'll, we'll have to figure this out.
Talk to Butch.
All right, I'm, I will talk to Butch tomorrow and see, I'm, I'm pretty sure he'll be, he'll be open to that. He's, he's pretty good. So James, and then I'll just email you guys and we'll get whoever else can go and we can go, maybe like a Friday afternoon or something, you know, before the week here.
During the week would be better.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So anybody else who wants to field trip and take your life into someone else's hands? All right, I think, think that's it. I think we did well.
Okay, if anybody else has any questions, we can entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good night, everyone.
Have a good weekend.
John Lavelle, are you and I going up to Eastern Lane together?
Thanks, everybody. Take care.
Thanks, Brian. I'm still happy to sound sick.
Good night.
I'll see you in Eastern Lane.
John, are you and I driving up to Eastern Lane together?
When is that? Saturday, Judith?
Yeah. I put it in, I put it in my calendar. I'm just asking. We don't have to.
I will not be in town Saturday is my problem.
Okay.
We're going to close up our camp.
It's fine. I'll, I'm, I'm not worried about making the drive. I just had it written down that we might do that. So it's fine. Thank you.
I'll see you there.
Okay.
I'll see you there. Thank you. Judy, I'm going to go on Saturday, so I'll see you too. I figured just another body.
What's, what's the house number at the far end? So I can put it in my calendar and get a map.
I think it's seventy.
Seventy Eastern Lane?
Yeah. I'll double check that and I'll email you if it's wrong. If you don't hear from me, it's seventy. Cause I'm just going off my brain.
Well, as long as that's a real thing, it'll get me there.
Yeah, they have a house and I think it's pretty. But there's two lots, so I'm kind of counting on other cars being there.
Yeah, there is a seventy Eastern Lane, Eastern Lane in Woodstock, also in Great Britain and a few other places.
Oh, nice. Great.
All right, I'll try to get up there at ten.
Okay. I know. Bye. Bye. Thank you.
You're welcome. Bye.